Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone today. It's a regular scheduled board meeting. Today is July the 8th, 2024. And so we have several things on our agenda tonight. And as always, we start our meetings out with a prayer and a pledge. So Commissioner Green is going to lead us in our prayer, and then Commissioner Ellis will lead us in our pledge.
Blessing. Father, we thank you, the Seaton, for your blessings and your mercies. We thank you that we live in a country where we can be free to conduct our business. Father, we pray that we would make the decisions that are best for the folks of this county. We pray, Lord, that you would bless each effort that's been made to come out tonight, the audience, and, Lord, I pray that you'd be with the board as we try to conduct this business. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone's seen the minutes. Do I hear a motion? We approve the minutes for tonight's session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You pose. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask for a brief, closed session at the end of our meeting tonight.
Is that policy personnel matters?
Yes.
Personnel matters?
Yeah.
Okay.
Making that as a motion as far as our second motion.
One favor, say aye.
Aye.
You pose. Okay. First, on our appointment schedule tonight, we've got Hunter out of May. We've got the animal service staff introduction. So Ms. Taylor Guzman is here tonight. So Taylor, you have the floor.
I'm Taylor Guzman. This is all my staff besides one. She is at a church function, so she won't be here. I've been director for about, I would say, close to a year now. So we've worked really hard over the past two years to keep a 10% euthanasia rate. Best Friends recognizes that. It's a big organization for the animals. So this year, we'll get another plaque for 2023, and we have one for 2022 for less than 10% euthanasia. This is my staff. That's Hunter Gravely. She started in October. She's our primary care technician. Caitlin McKinney, she started in November. She's my kennel tech. Lacey Vivins, she's my part-time kennel tech. And Abby Brooks is my animal patrol officer. Alicia Groundstaff is not here. She's my supervisor for animal control, which we took over on June 1st. So they are working very hard with the new transition for that. I also want to thank the sheriff's office because they have helped us tremendously with transitioning to animal control. And they're probably very thankful because now that I know how many calls they get for animals, it's a, but they are thankful that we take that over because their call volumes also went up as well. That's about all I have for them.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks because I know that you do get a lot of phone calls, and I know that the job is tough, especially when you have the euthanasia. But it's, we have to control it best we can, and I do, I do want to say thank you all for doing what you do.
I appreciate the job that you guys do and appreciate your willingness to, to take over the operation. I do have some questions that I'm going to pose to you. If you would just provide the information to our county manager so he can supply it to me, and that is the qualifications for your animal control officer, what their duties are.
So their duties are basically take in, well, call the people for stray animals, abandoned animals, injured animals, any animal call, basically. I think the only thing we don't take is barking dogs. The sheriff's office said they'll handle that, so I said, okay. So any call that's related to any type of animal call. I think Alicia went to a snake call the other day and had to get a snake out of a house. So anything related to animals, we go to.
So do you do the enforcement part?
We can't charge anything. That's when the sheriff's office will come in and help us out.
Okay, that, that was part of my question. Thank you.
Well, Taylor, I'd like to say thank you for the job you're doing, and we welcome your staff. Glad to have you guys on board. Also, my wife is certainly, and I've said this many times, certainly an animal lover, which I have found myself to be quite an animal lover myself. But we have, now, the, the rules and regulations are governed by the, are they governed by the state?
It's a combination. So we are, the shelter itself is inspected by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, and so we have a standard that we must follow for the shelter. And so as far as like the enforcement, that is something also governed by statute as far as rabies control, as far as dogs running at large, and then we have a county ordinance. And so one of the things that we have been looking at, at your direction, is revising animal control ordinance. We've had some staff turnover, as has been alluded to, and the new incorporation of the animal patrol into that department. And so now we can kick it in a different gear as far as looking at the ordinance. But Taylor has been looking at it and providing feedback to me, as has been done before, was consultation with staff for requested improvements, to make their job a little bit, maybe a little bit easier in some aspects for enforcement, but also maybe clearer for the residents about what their expectations are.
I'd like to make sure that, and you know, we can talk about this on a later day, but I'd like to make sure that there are stringent rules concerning abuse of animals. You know, I don't, I will never try to fight the right of the hunter in the essence that they, you know, tied dogs by hunting dogs by chains. You know, I understand the reasoning for that, and it helps them to train them to, to lead and to handle in the woods. However, to tie a dog up and, or any animal and leave it without water or without food, I would definitely like to see very strong penalties for that here in this county. There's no excuse for that. I don't, I don't compare an animal to a human, but I think an animal should be treated with, with love and respect. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Next, item B, and we have a DSS update, and we have Ms. Bobby Sigmund here for that. So Bobby's got some pictures and postcards and things to bring, I think.
Signs. We were recently able to join Rutherford County since we are the same judicial district. We, we joined Rutherford County and Dogwood Foundation and several of our state partners as well, working together to tackle several challenges. We actually worked together with this county, with Rutherford County and McDowell County, as well as Judge Martell and Rutherford County's director, myself, both of our county attorneys, as well as Dogwood and several of our state partners across the state. And about, I would say, 30 to 40 of our staff joined together to see if we could come, come together and brainstorm several issues and what we could do with DSS staffing and turnover, getting some of our parents and children in our child welfare system, substance abuse and mental health treatment, how we could tackle court delays, and foster parent access. We also went over a new program that is a pilot program, which is called the Safe Babies Program, put on by AOC. We actually are, we have another appointment next, or actually tomorrow, I think. Judge Martell and I are meeting with the Safe Babies Program liaison through AOC. If we are picked for this program, we'll be the fifth county in North Carolina to pilot this program, which is real exciting. So we're excited about that. Judge Martell is also excited about that. We also met with NC Child, who is helping us navigate some policy landscape questions such as we have 12 months to permanency. However, we cannot file a TPR until a child has been in the system for 12 months, which is one of the policy issues that we're running across. So things of that nature. We're also talking about that even our, many of our judges see a problem with our mental health system as well. It's a struggle for parents to navigate the system. It's also a struggle for us to navigate the system as well. So we're trying to come across some healthy, healthy programs for that as well. So that was exciting for both of our counties to come across and meet together. It was an all-day event. We met until about 3 o'clock that evening. Guardian Lottum's office was also involved in that as well. So that was one of our things. The next thing we're doing is, many of you have flyers for the first annual back-to-school drive that we're doing. We're collecting school supplies for not only our foster children, but hopefully kids that we're involved with at DSS, and then whatever leftover supplies that we have will donate to the school system. This was an idea that we came up with, that we wanted to help our community. And so we're going to see how successful it is. We've never done it before, but we're going to try our best. We're collecting donations now, between now and August the 26th. The drop-off will be either at McDowell DSS or Root Salon located in Old Fort. So we have donations boxes at both of those locations. And we're accepting all kinds of school supplies, book bags, all the list. So we're very excited about that, and we hope it will be super successful.
So let me just ask you a question about that. What you and your folks intend to do is pick up those supplies and deliver them to?
We hope to have those supplies. We will have those supplies at the DSS offices, and whatever our foster children need to start school with, those will be our first, our first on the list. Then anyone else involved with Child Protective Services that maybe needs help with school supplies, because we all know that those are expensive at times, and some families struggle with that here in our community. If they need help, we'll also help them with whatever, whatever donations we have left. Then we'll open it up to anyone else receiving services with food, nutrition, or Medicaid that we can also serve with whatever donations that we have. And then if we have anything left after that, we'll go straight to the school system because we always know that there's some kid that walks in on that first day and doesn't have the school supplies.
Do you know who the coordinator is for Operation Backpack with the school system? And have you made contact with them?
I have not. This is our first time that we're doing this, and like I said, we're mainly concentrating on our foster kids because a lot of our foster kids sometimes are out of county, that kind of thing. So we're mainly concentrating on them, but, and then we're going to concentrate on anyone else that needs our assistance here in the community with whatever donations we get, with kinships, that maybe they have children in their home that their kinship agreement or they're out of county, and then we'll go from there.
I'll get that information to you, and maybe you guys can work together.
Absolutely. We'll glad, we'll be glad to work with whomever. So our next thing is, this is what we're starting. A few years ago, I want to say about five to six years ago, there was a study done here in North Carolina that spoke about if churches, if there were churches, one foster family from every church in North Carolina, that no child would have to go outside their home community. So we've really been concentrating on that here in McDowell County. There are 150 churches here in McDowell County. We only have 93 children in foster care. So if we had one family from every church here in McDowell County to be a foster parent, we wouldn't have to send any, any child outside of McDowell County to be out of their home community. Now, there's going to be certain times that they need extended treatment, mental health treatment, or something else that we know that there's going to be exceptions to the rules, but we have so many church communities that could, could have families there in their church communities that could step up. So we've committed to this one church, one child that we're working with, with the Foster Alliance, Foster Parent Alliance in North Carolina. They're also doing, they're kicking off, many of you may have had or seen some Facebook posts about it, a movie based out of Possum Trot, Texas, where a church community out in Possum Trot, Texas, took it upon themselves to start fostering kids out. There, there were kids that they were struggling with, that they said nobody wanted in the foster system. So this church took it upon themselves to start fostering and adopting these kids. This, this movie is in the movie theaters right now, and eventually they fostered and adopted so many kids, there was not a fostered child within 100 miles of Possum Trot. There's no reason we can't do the same thing here. We have the ability. And that's any community here in North Carolina, but we have the ability. We have, we have the faith communities, we have communities in general that we can do this with. So we have one church, one child, and that's the mission and outreach between McDowell DSS and the churches and community organizations to meet the McDowell County children, the, the needs of them with foster care, Child Protective Services, or Adoption Services. Even if we have churches that have older congregations, and we've been asked this question, hey, we only have one younger couple in our, our church. We don't, we don't have anyone that can foster right now because we have an older congregation. That's fine. You can do, you can contribute to the cause. You can get, help us get the word out. You can maybe do a foster parent meal every now and then, just to give them a night out or a date night. Or you can sponsor just a foster parent night out at the skating rink or something to get the kids out. There's lots of ways to contribute to the cause, not just being a foster parent. So we've sponsored this. We're also going to do some bulletins, things like that. We're very excited about this. We have pamphlets that we've sent out to all of the churches. So that's our next project. And then we have these new yard signs to recruit for foster parents. If you have a little room in your home and your heart, we need foster parents. So we always need foster parents. We're definitely excited for these signs. We have these yard signs at our office if anyone needs them or wants to put one in your yard. We would be super excited for you to do so. We figure that these little signs will get a lot more traffic than a board, a huge board. So we're excited about these signs, and, and we're excited about the sign as well. Any questions?
No, that was a good presentation, and that was going to be one of my questions was how, how we are with our fostering here in the county, our foster parents and foster homes, and I can see that we're, we're lacking what we need. And I would challenge everyone sitting out here today and all those that are watching on TV tonight to, to take this idea to their churches and to their communities and try to help encourage more people to get involved with this, to, for the care and welfare of these children.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Next on the appointments is item C, the strategic planning presentation, and we have Jeff Emery here tonight to give us a date on that.
Thank you very much. I don't need to do anything that period on the screen, Ashley.
I think he's going to switch it over, but we'll give it just a second. I'll just say really quick before Jeff gets started, he was in here almost a year ago with a colleague who moved on to a different agency, and Jeff has been very patient with us, with our work group, as we've tried to come together over the last few months and work on, on this first draft of this document for you, which was your charge. And so he's been great to work with, so I'll say that for the record. And I would encourage any other local government, if they ever ask, to work with NC Commerce on this process because it's been very enlightening and, and helpful.
Thank you very much. Yeah, as Ashley said, I, I work with NC Commerce, and I know, I know state agencies can get confusing, but I work for the, my division of commerce is Main Street and Rural Planning Center, and I serve as the Economic Development Planner for the Southwest Region. And I cover 10 counties. I actually live in Lincoln County, and I cover the counties around the Charlotte area. When this project started, my colleague Kyle Case was the project lead. And Kyle, actually, McDowell County is in the Northwest Prosperity Zone, and I was assisting him, and then Kyle went to take a job with, with actually the COG area, and so I became the lead for this project, and I took over. And it just so happens Kyle's replacement has just been hired, so you're going to have a new person to fill, to fulfill your district. But, but yes, we, part of the services we provide in rural planning is strategic planning. And sometime last fall or late summer, you entered into a memorandum of understanding to have a strategic plan conducted. And so I'm here tonight to present to you, I guess I would say, the, the final draft of the plan. The one thing I will say is, at some point, and this was laid out in the memorandum of understanding, we, we would ask the county to take official action to either adopt or accept the plan. Two things I'll point out right up front, we are not a regulatory agency. There are no requirements or regulations that you take any official actions that are recommended in this plan. This is strategic, this is just, this is totally a plan based on recommendations that we came together as part of the work group. The second thing, that's good news. The second thing I'll say is, you know, unfortunately, we do not come with a, a basket full of money to help you implement the things that cost you. I wish we could, but, but, but we don't. We can provide ideas and we can provide suggestions on maybe our ideas, how things that help, and we can provide you lists of funding sources, but, but unfortunately, it does not come with funds. I want to do just a brief run-through. It's 50 pages long. I promise you, and I know you nor I want to go through this in a lot of detail tonight. I know you've got a long agenda, but I'll go through as much detail as you like. I will also be willing to come back. I know there was, it's been stated that y'all would like to have the, for the general public, perhaps, an opportunity to review this, is some sort of public standing or some type of review period, and I think that's a good idea. But it, but, so I am more than happy to go through this at either tonight or later date in as much, much detail as you would like. But do y'all have it in front of you? I'm sorry, I'm just, okay, I didn't know if it was going to be up there or not.
Not have the full 50 pages, but I got a few of the.
If you would just highlight it tonight, and then we'll, we'll try to make a time for you to come back and have the public.
Do they, do they have on the computer what's in front of you? Okay. Because I'm really, I'm really basing my comments based on the plan, so let.
Technical expert.
Okay. She'll give you this a minute.
Okay.
And I promise I'll just do the highlights. I know, I know you're busy.
We appreciate that.
But I need to have it.
Absolutely.
It's not going to make sense if you don't have it to look at while I even give the highlights. That's great. Thank you so much. We'll scroll down, and if you'll just follow me, I'm going to hit a few of the highlight pages. You'll see table of contents. And here, I do want to pause just a second on the acknowledgements. As I said, Kyle Case, he started the plan, and then I took over. I want to acknowledge the work group. We have a fantastic work group. We tell the work group up front, this is really, you know, your plan. These are your ideas and your out, you know, your input is critical to putting this together. Ashley has been fantastic to work with. He was instrumental in, in putting this together and was just, just, just great to work with on this plan. And as you'll see here, you are, you are part of Appalachian Regional Commission. There's 31 counties in North Carolina that's NARC. McDowell is one of those. And then as you'll see, Main Street and Rural Planning is what I was talking about when I first started my comments. The executive summary, this page here, I do want to point out one thing that I think is critical. If you'll look at the, the third paragraph down, it says the, the plan includes, excuse me, I got switched glasses, I apologize. There's 28 objectives in this plan and 79 recommendations. That's a lot, but we covered a lot of area when we went through, went through this. And you'll see in just a minute, we broke this down into six areas, and a lot of these areas, actually, I think when we met, because I, I met y'all one time. That meeting was November the 1st of '23, and we did a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So we took what y'all told us as the elected officials to start this process, and we really tried to hone in on the areas that you told us that were important to you all to base this plan on. So we created six areas that I'll go over in a little bit more detail in a minute. Public service, county organization, economic development and infrastructure, natural resources and recreation, education, health and public safety, and housing. Let me point out right up front, because we talked about this among the work group, the numbering system in no way indicates any type of priority. These are simply just numbers for recording purposes. So please don't look at this as, the 1 through 6 is no reflection of priority in our minds. It's just simply for numbering for the plan. The next, the next big part of the plan are simply what we, a demographic section. I'm not going to spend time on this tonight. Most of this, I'm sure you know, it's just a lot of, and we actually went over some of this at that November 1st meeting. A lot of locations and population change. As you can see, a lot of demographics that we simply get from information that's out there available to you as well, age diversity, so education. So I don't want to talk about this because the meat of the plan is really near the back of the plan, labor force statistics we have in here, unemployment statistics. When, when you have a chance to go over this, if you have any questions for me or you want to relay them to Ashley, please feel free to do this. But I want to go all the way to where the plan, where the, what I call the meat of the plan, and, you know, we, we talk about housing, that, that, that ends up being a whole section in the plan because that, that is such a big item. Talk about tourism. I'm almost where I want to be. The first thing, let me talk about this page just a minute, the planning process. November 1st to '23, the Board of Commissioners conducted the SWOT analysis and began identifying topics for a vision statement, and we reviewed demographic, demographic and economic data. That's what I just scrolled through real quick. December 7th, we reviewed the SWOT analysis from the Board of Commissioners, reviewed and discussed community survey results. We also did a community survey. We began discussion of a vision statement. February 8th, discussion of final SWOT analysis. We reviewed stakeholder comments. We also interviewed folks we call stakeholders, key members of the community. We conducted a vision statement exercise, reviewed the work plan format. On March 21st, we reviewed the vision statement. We developed goals, objectives, and actions for the work plan. And on May 2nd of this year, we finalized the vision statement, goals, objectives, and actions, and discussed completion. and discussed completion of the project in public forum format. And of course blank is the adoption, what I was just talking about at some point. We will, we will ask the, the Board formally adopt. After reviewing the information gathered at the Board of Commissioners meeting, citizens, work group surveys, stakeholder interviews and several meetings, the following recommendations are presented. Recommendations are made of our McDowell County vision statement, goals, objectives and action steps. So we're really getting to the meat of things now. This is a vision statement we're recommending for the county. Ideally located in the foothills of Western North Carolina with an abundance of beautiful natural resources. McDowell County offers an unparalleled work and leisure experience for residents and visitors alike. Our economic prosperity, enjoyable living and superior health and safety are driven by our dedicated workforce, excellent county services and high quality education system. We think every county, every, every unit of government needs a vision statement and that is what we came up for you. So it, at some point when you adopt the plan, that vision statement will be part of what you are adopting. Then we get into the act, when I mentioned there, there's six goals and objectives. 28, excuse me, six goals and strategies, 28 objectives and 78 actions. You'll see that through the next few pages and I'm going to pause at the very end because I think this is a little easier format to go over it. And this is where I'm going to take just, just a couple of minutes if you'll let me. Here is just, this I think is a little simpler version to read what we've come up with. Here, goal one, we is public service and county organization. Our goal is to provide a high level of services to residents and visitors by maintaining an effective and efficient county organization. You will see we have five objectives listed as 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 4 and 5. Under each objective, you will then have actual action steps. And the actions correspond with the numbering of the objective. So for example, the first objective is 1-1. So as you'll see, an action step such as 1-1, 1-1-2, those are all actions that go under Objective 1-1. That's why I said we, we had to number these for the, the actions and objectives to make sense. Let me just, for example, read the objectives under the first goal. Ensure county employees are fairly compensated through salary and benefits and develop an employee succession plan. Objective 1-2, establish desired service level for residents and visitors and provide funding and written guidelines to maintain such level. Address aging facilities. Objective 1-4, continually explore revenue diversification options in an effort to maintain a strong financial position. Objective 1-5, ensure elected and appointed officials communicate effectively with the public. And then if you go, and if I'm going way too fast, you please stop me. Then under goal number two, for economic development and infrastructure, our goal is to maintain county infrastructure. An effort, should say in an effort to support existing, promote expansion and encourage new business, tourism and economic development. Goal three comes under the category of natural resources and recreation. Goal three is to protect and maintain amenities to promote good health for residents. Then you have to go down, we couldn't get everything, all six goals on one page. So you have to go through all the, and then if you go to our, goal four is education. Provide access to student centered, high quality K-12, post-secondary and lifelong learning programs. Our fifth goal is health and public safety. Provide a healthy and safe environment for business, residents and visitors. Our sixth goal, and some people call these strategies, so you can call them goals or strategies. I call them goals for the purpose of this plan. Our sixth goal was to provide an environment that is conducive to safe, conducive to safe and affordable housing for all. And again, when you start reading this, if you'll just go under each section and read the objectives and then, you know, go, go down to the actions under each objective. I know that is a very, very quick run through. Again, I am happy to go back and read or go through any objectives or actions in as much detail as you want either tonight at a later date. But I will say again, there was a tremendous amount of work put in this. I really feel we covered, if there were areas the board brought up that maybe aren't in this plan, it might've been because we felt that was beyond anything county government, you know, has control over. But we really made an attempt to touch on all the areas you told us you wanted us to touch on. And I hope when you read this, you'll feel we've done that. And again, if we haven't, then there's obviously still time to work on this, but.
I can see already that you did touch on some of the things that we had highlighted. And so we appreciate that. I think there's a, a lot for us to look at here and we'll spend some time on that. And we'll have Mr. Whitten, do you guys have anything?
Yeah, I was going to suggest on the adoption, I would like to look out possibly in September and get staff to get the buy-in from school board and the other, there were some, on the committee, on the board, there were some pretty good mixes of, of different places. But definitely because of education being one of the items, or one of the strategic plan items, I'd like to, if you don't care to get in touch with the, the school system and make sure that they're okay in addressing these same issues. But then we also, I would also like to see if you can get something established in a public forum so that we can discuss this on a public, open publicly. And then after that point, then possibly adopt it at that time. The reason why I would like to suggest to get the, get buy-in both from the school system and then from the public. We may want to revise it just a little bit, but then I do think it'll be, this is very good. What was included in our presentation was the seven pages of the strategic plan and the goals. I didn't get, we did not get the, the full packet, so maybe we can get that too. And that'll give us some time to look over it a little bit more detail. But it's obvious that there was a lot of work going into this. One, thank you for leading it. Two, thanks for the board for getting this to happen. But three, moving forward, I'd like to get staff to get the buy-in from the school board and then get something established on a public forum type. And it could be at an evening meeting to discuss in an open, in an open forum. So, and then after that, then we'll be able to possibly adopt it at that time. So if that's good with you, Jeff.
We'll try to move faster than we have.
Well, let me say this, I mean, a lot, a lot of what slowed this process down was because of our change in personnel. I mean, it wasn't anything, I mean, it was a, like I said, Ashley and the, the work group was fantastic to work with. And I understand your buy-in completely. I, I walking in these rooms brings back memories to me. I was a city manager for almost 30 years myself. And my brother was a county manager. So most good memories, not all good, but mostly they. But thank y'all, thank y'all so much. Like I said, it was a, it was a great group, work group. And whatever plan y'all want to follow, we're, we're here. We want you to be happy and satisfied with this plan.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Thank y'all.
Okay, next on the agenda under old business, out of May, we've got the water project update. Mr. Whitten, you lead us up.
Absolutely. So a lot of, a lot of water projects. You mentioned in the slide, Mr. Abernathy participated in this project. And he made a comment to me today that we've got a lot of water lines going on the ground. I said, just wait. And so today, actually, we, we actually did a partial shutdown of the Nevo system because we're tying on part of this expansion area. And so we gave notice to the residents that would be affected. And so there's one coming in a couple of weeks. But phase one is almost done. We've got a few things to button up. And again, you see the roads that, that are addressed and affected there. We, we were getting lots of phone calls and interest from folks wanting to tie on, which is good. Moving on to Hoppy Tom Hollow, the paper ran a, a small release we did on that one. That one is underway. And I'll, I'll make sure people understand, of course, the board understands. Sometimes the funding we receive on these projects comes from different pots. And it may look like we're favoring one area differently from another. For Hoppy Tom Hollow is different than phase one as far as the funding source. Hoppy Tom was a competitive grant. This is something different than phase one and phase two, we'll talk about in a second. And so Hoppy Tom, the folks that live on that road will have their plumbing paid for by the grant. So we've not done that in a very long time where we were actually connecting folks to the water system. The grant is paying for 100% of that cost. Again, different program than phase one. Phase one is not doing that. And so we've had people that own property in both areas to say, well, you're paying here, why not over here? And it's not, it's only because of the funding source. And so for Hoppy Tom, we've had about 18 or 20 people out of about possible 35 or 40 that have already turned in their applications. So that's a good indication that the interest we heard from about a year and a half ago was, was definitely real. You authorized last month or so, phase 2A and 2B. Those are starting relatively soon. Things are so slow moving through Riley anymore, just because they're overwhelmed with the, all the grants. But we should have the sign off and permission on that within weeks. And then that'll start. Good contractor got both of those, which helps out. I'll mention two here, it's important to understand, not so much for the end user. As long as they get water, maybe it doesn't matter. But as part of this, this process and part of some other projects that we have completed on behalf of the city, we are actually moving the location of our master meter. So right now, at the bottom of Stacy Hill, it looks like a vault. It is. That is where, some of you may remember, we obtained an easement to have a master meter placed there. It's functioning to stay. Going westward from that box is the city's system. Eastward, including Stacy Hill, that is our system. As part of this trade-off, I'll say with the city, we are moving that master meter on the west side of Beaman Road. So it's about a mile of water line or so that after all this changeover in 2A will be part of the county system. And so there's a few customers on that segment, not many. They will become county customers. That line will be owned by the county. And so we will have more of system growth at that, that point in time. As part of this project, we're also running a line, Beaman Road I mentioned, but also on, I guess it's Memorial Park Road there, that'll come out right at the attic. So almost at this, at the city limit, will almost all be county water system from that point eastward. So a lot is kind of going on behind the scenes there. East end, which is around the golf course is, I've signed permits and things the last couple of weeks. It's probably about three months from starting construction, maybe a little bit longer. But that one's going to be very complex. If you've ever been on any of the roads in that community, they're very narrow and a lot of the lines will probably have to go in the roadway. But again, a grant, a grant is paying for that project. The grant is paying for those homes being connected. Exit 90, which is a small project funded by ARC, Appalachian Regional Commission. That one has started design and that'll mostly be on Boyd Road and then a little bit on Burma Road East. And then finally in Nevo, you approved six or eight months ago, an agreement with the developer where he is paying at his expense to extend a water line into his development, building to our specs and approval. Once it's done, it'll turn over to our ownership and maintenance. And so he has started construction on that line. Our commitment to that was to do the bore under the highway and that will be done within weeks. And lastly underwater, again, moving outside of Nevo, we are trying to nail down the contract for engineering permitting and design on the water line to go to West Marion Elementary. And so we've provided the scope to the engineer and we're waiting on a contract proposal. And again, we're going to not just take what they give us, we're going to try to negotiate that down as we always do.
Now we had the, on the development, we had put the water under the road, which was about a $20,000 cost.
Twenty, I think so, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
All right, let's move along to item B, which will be the building projects update. Mr. Whitten.
Update is the word of the night, I guess. And so the memo hasn't changed much from what you've, to start off with, what you've seen for months. But I'll start with the SS Building, our director's still here. You had authorized, which we did, Ms. Sigmund and I worked with an architecture firm to develop essentially what I would call like a marketing package. It has a, a rough outline of a floor plan, some massing schematics as well as some costs. Maybe more importantly, that was presented to our legislative delegation. Honestly was, and as we've talked about openly in the meeting, meetings in the past, to ask for legislative assistance for what could be a very expensive building. As I've communicated and if you've paid attention, and as you know, the state operates on a biannual budget. And so that means last year in the long session, they passed it to your budget. They don't have to adjust it in the short session. They usually do. And they usually look at inflation, they look at revenues and things and make adjustments. And typically that can mean policy changes, but it usually means funding for school salaries, you know, state employees, those sorts of things. But if you paid attention to the news, the Senate and the House were not able to get together really on, on the concept. There was, not to belabor the point, but there was just disagreement on what they wanted to spend in that budget adjustment. And so at this point, they really haven't adjusted the budget. They've done some minor tweaks. They did do some state employee and, including school staff adjustments and a few other things, but the big questions of changing policy or big expenditures are not there for us or anyone else. So other cities and counties did not get directed grants. There's a rumor and a possibility that they may come back in September and do something, but it's not set in stone. So there's, there's no news is the point from legislative on the SS Building or any other building or project at this point from the legislature. Transfer Station, we received word a few days ago that the state has approved the repair plan for the transfer station. Again, that is the, the complex up at the top of the hill where the waste is loaded on the trailers. And as I've talked about, it's important to understand, we'll do, you know, information and notices as much as we can. This is going to be a very disruptive project when it starts in a couple of months. That whole facility that's under a roof will be shut down for a month, hopefully at the max, but maybe longer. shut down for a month, hopefully at the max, but maybe longer. Essentially, that entire floor is going to be dug out and replaced. And so we obviously can't have waste going in at that point. So what we're doing is building a smaller floor right beside it. So that will be where the public, commercial trucks and others will load the waste. It will be pushed onto trailers like it's happening now. That's not under a roof. It's not typically allowed, but the state will do it since it's a mandated repair. The bids should go out, hopefully, within a month, month and a half. And then, it's a very complex project, of course, and we'll bring those bids back to you. The scales you've authorized have been ordered. And we'll work with that contractor, which is probably going to be different than the transfer station, to make sure we're not having a horrible mess up there all at once, but.
I would suggest to owner of the transfer station improvement, to post it at least 30 days in advance, so that at every convenience center and at the dump down there, so that everybody knows that it's going to be done during this timeframe.
And we have been talking as staff about things that we can do to mitigate. Because if you think about the floor we have versus the one we're going to have, which is a little bit smaller, just as big as we can do, we may not be able to accept as much waste as we're accepting now. So they're moving as fast as they can whenever waste is brought in. And even with the current floor, as fast as they're going, after holiday weekends and other, you know, holiday closures and things, a lot of waste can come in at once. And they have to close the gate because we cannot have anywhere else to put the waste. And so whether it's extended hours on a Saturday or something, we're going to do our best to not impact the end user.
Mr. Wood, let me also ask you a question. Have we ever entertained the thought, and I guess I'm going from transfer station to convenience centers and the whole, the whole thing about our waste, but have we ever investigated the idea of using compactors at our convenience centers rather than the several dumpsters? I don't know what the cost would be, but I know that you could handle a lot more waste for less hauls. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. We have had discussions about that, Mr. Riddle and I. And what we've talked about is the strategy of where those would make the most sense. Because that would make sense probably at all the sites, but it would be very expensive to do them all at one time, obviously. So you, you look at strategy. And so we've talked about Crooked Creek, for example, where you don't have a lot of space. And it's harder to get to, maybe not as convenient some as the other ones. It might make more sense there. The only hiccup we would have, might be a big one, is that three-phase power there. And so that's an investment that would be needed from the electric company.
There's three-phase power out in that area there.
So it's probably close. And so we have had a few conversations with Department of Environmental Quality, because they will do grants. The equipment isn't so cost prohibitive that we couldn't do it, but it is expensive. And so we've talked to them about grants. They focus mostly on recycling bins and things and not just waste. And we try the angle of, well, it's less emissions because we're having less trips out there, but it doesn't quite fit their parameters. But we have talked about it. The gate site is another one that would probably make a lot of sense because we don't always have, usually don't have a truck stationed there. To get on Saturdays, it can be, you know, a big area of focus. But in the grand scheme of what we're looking at, it would, it would make sense as we can fit it in to do it. A demo site, maybe. But a lot of counties have moved that way. A lot of them have where, Rutherford's one, right there on 221, if you see it, where you just throw it right off into the hill and it's off the hill. And it's very, much more convenient than what we've got. But makes sense. We could look at it and get back to you.
I'd like to see us at least investigate that.
Yes, sir. I'll close out on the building updates. The recreation center, we've got a retaining wall going up now, which is behind where the pool is, on the side adjacent to the fellowship hall for the church on our property. There's, we did have a conversation a week or so ago. There's a power line that goes to the church that crosses our property via an easement. And we're trying to get that buried because of aesthetics, but also it's an obstacle. And the cost was understood to be this, I don't think it was a purposeful misquote or anything, it was just a misunderstanding and it turned out to be one like that. And so we're reaching out to do for any sort of assistance on, you know, public interest to maybe offset that. But otherwise, the project is going very smoothly. Fireworks were shot off there last week from the parking lot area, as has been done for a very long time. And there was no impact to our project at all. The last item I mentioned in our building updates, our staff has left, but I have been in communication with Taylor. Some time ago, you talked about animal shelter, planning for a facility and looking towards that direction. And we looked at county-owned property on 226, near where our current facility is. And we had identified about a two or three acre site near the Saddle and Brido Club, right off 226. And we did floodplain examination, we did wetlands, and then finally did geotechnical. The first two told us there was obviously water nearby and to have some concern there. The geotechnical report, I think I said last month, was very negative. And that site was found to really be unsuitable for, for development. What they told us is roughly about four feet of soil going down would have to be removed. And then below that, it would have to be reinforced with micropile. So very expensive to make it suitable. And so we've been trying to look as staff for other county-owned properties for such a project, preferably in the area where it is now. And we're really limited there. It's either waste-related or just not otherwise suitable. We do own property on Spalding Road. I've provided an aerial in your packet. I'm not asking for you to vote tonight to absolutely definitely say yes for building animal shelter on Spalding Road. What I would like to ask for, I'm briefing you on where a possible site is, about a five acre site, which is too big, but it's a start as far as scaling it down. To be able to look at it, do a topographical survey, if that's suitable, you know, just keep going. There's no wet ones here. It's on a.
I think we need to move forward with it.
I do, too.
It is, it is easy access to public water and sewer.
Yes, sir. It's got sewer, which is a necessity. If you're okay.
Yep, you're okay.
We'll move, move forward with that. And again, it's just, if it turns out not to be something you want to do there, if nothing else, we have a topographical survey of our own property that we can use for something else. It's money well spent. So we'll proceed with that if I consensus.
Yes.
We have, we're fortunate enough to get some grant money to help take care of these things. And we need more for a lot of the other projects, the DSS Building and different things. My grandfather had a saying that the pig that squills the loudest always gets fed first. And so there's a lot of truth to that. But I think we certainly need to stay, I appreciate what our legislators do, but it certainly behooves us to stay after our legislators and be sure that they know the things that we need. Moving on, one other thing, and you mentioned the fireworks. I'd like to make a suggestion or a motion, and if you, if you guys would agree with it, to send a letter of appreciation to both municipalities for putting on the fireworks.
I'll second that.
Our communities enjoy that. And I think it's a good thing that the, that Old Ford and Marion both do every year.
And you do, just as a reminder, it's not a lot, but you provide $500 a piece.
I know that we do, but also they, they spend much, much more than that.
Yeah.
Much, much more than that. So I'd, I think it'd be good to send them a letter of appreciation.
Motion, I have a second.
All in favor of that?
I'd do that.
Okay. All right. Moving along now, giving you the floor again, Mr. Wood. We'll have a broadband update.
Broadband. I can finally, it's been in the paper, appreciate Mike reaching out about that. The state senate press release for an award that was made under the Completing Access to Broadband Grant. And so this is, I mentioned a couple of months where we were in a process, and I couldn't really say much. And I, you know, it was competitive information or whatever. But we're through that. And so Skyrunner out of Asheville was awarded a grant to serve 795 addresses. Mostly in the Nevo area, there are a few sprinkled out in other parts of the county. And so that was very positive to see. And Skyrunner has been around a while, but until this process, I honestly did not know they did fiber or anything hardwired, because they've been doing a radio type program in the past, which we've worked with them in the past for that. So this is fiber to the home, just so people are clear that you're Skyrunner, it's not an antenna. And so that is in the contracting process. And your, your contribution is around $865,000 out of that of ARPA funds. So we'll let you know how that, how that goes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. Next is item D, which is the Charlotte IBT request update. Mr. Wood.
Very brief update. Just want to make sure you know that in the public, there's been information posted and will continue to do so. There's a public input session next Monday in Morganton at Comma. This is a meeting, so people are clear, it is hosted by Charlotte Water. This is not the state, it's not Morganton or anyone else in the region. And so people will go in if they're interested and want to learn more. It will be Charlotte Water folks primarily talking about what their request is going to the state. And so again, that's next Monday night at 6:00 PM at the Comma Center there in Morganton. We will have staff there. We're also having conversations, as I've mentioned, with our colleagues, Western Piedmont Council of Governments. That was the group almost 20 years ago that we worked with on the Concord Kannaples IBT. And in that process, it's not where you go in and you show up in Raleigh at a hearing and say, we don't like what you're doing, don't do it. You, you can do that and you can communicate that more professionally in a letter. What you have to do as part of the process is present alternatives. And what that means is finding information, engineering that presents these alternatives to the state. Environmental Management Commission will look at these alternatives as they make their decision on it. And they'll use that input hopefully to, hopefully change the decision on the IBT from what the city of Charlotte wants.
I think we should definitely have some serious input and say so on this.
And I speak to Western Piedmont Council of Governments Executive Director probably once a week about it. So, you know, some are in kind of a lull, but he did tell me about two weeks ago, they are doing essential RFQ process for engineers right now. So keep you posted.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. All right, next we have new business. And under item A, new business, we're administrative items, Mr. Wood.
Just two tonight. We have EMS write-offs, and these are, again, non-collectible accounts. We go through, as I mentioned before, a lot of effort.
It's a pleasure, Board.
To accept administrative items as presented, say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Wood.
The next item, under HR policy edit, make sure I get the, I want to pull it up. Get to the, it says page 60. It's the, honestly, they clean up the language about persons subject to your HR policy. Because again, we're a county government, not a city, of course. A city is going to be very straightforward. You know, they have, the manager might be a little bit different, perhaps, but almost everyone else is treated equally. Here, we're a little more complex. You've got Board of Elections staff that are a little bit different. You have Cooperative Extension staff, Sheriff's Office, Registered Deeds. And so this cleans up the language about the applicability. Like item A, for example, you're exempt from the provisions. You don't do time sheets. You don't do all these sorts of things that other employees are, are doing, but you get paid for your, for your time. The manager is exempt for certain things because managers have an employment agreement. And I do not have employment protection. So just as an example, and so I'd ask for you to approve as presented.
We approve the policy change.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is the budget report. Mr. Wood.
This is just the budget update. So this closes out on your property tax. And there, this is it. For June 30, you have a 99 and a half for your, your collection rate for the year, which is just a hair off from where it was last year. So still doing really good and still in about the top 15 for.
Motion approved to close that.
So move, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next are our board appointments.
So, Madam Clerk, I can handle if you.
I can do it.
Very good. Give me a break.
We do. We have a few to look at, new applications and reinstatements. For the America 250 Committee, today, Freddie Kilo filled out an application, which I'll put at each one of your seats for you to look at. And that's a county commissioner appointee spot. The Library Board of Trustees, there's two requests for reinstatements for Pam Porche and Amy Clark. The Tourism Development Authority, there's a request for reinstatement for Bridget Walters. And one application for you to look at for David Rose. And then the Transportation Advisory Board, there are, there's a request for Lloyd Cutherson to be reinstated. And then lastly, the Planning Board, there's a request to reinstate Benny Stamey. And then, of course, we'll keep advertising for the vacancies listed.
Do we approve reinstatements?
One second.
Sorry. Got a motion to say it, approve reinstatements now. We have another one that is not a reinstatement. But we'll go ahead and handle this first. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
You're talking about the one application.
Yeah, one application. It's not, it doesn't need to be acted on today. So.
It's up to your discretion. They do meet tomorrow.
I do.
It's up to you if you want to.
Which one was that? Make a motion to accept Freddie Kilo as McDowell County American 250 Committee.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will mention, Mr. Vice Chair, under this item, just want to, you know, point out that, you know, Madam Clerk, on your second page there, reached out to our partners at Foothills Regional Commission for the Adult Care and Nursing Home Advisory Board. That is and was a very important committee and a hard one to get members on. And we struggled for years to get folks on there. And during COVID, it was essentially just mothballed. And pretty much every clerk, going back to Ms. Mitchell, has reached out to our partners there. We don't do it alone. Their ombudsman too. to ask about what's going on as far as the status. And I don't, something, Sina said to them, they said, all right, we're getting it back together. So it finally, finally worked.
Who is for Sina?
And so essentially, this is a first reading for that, so we'll post availability. But this is what I call a third set of eyes going into these facilities. Because DSS goes in, the state goes in at times. But this is a citizen committee that goes in and talks to folks in facilities, make sure they're getting the care they need and those sorts of things. And they report back to you. And it's been not there for four years. So this, we'll make sure we promote this.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I have contacted some folks today that say they will be willing to serve on that board. So I will have that for you next time.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is tax matters, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. A little bit different than, you do have some typical rebills and refunds and things. Your first, after my memo, you have a memo from the tax assessor. And in mine and hers, it talks about three taxpayers here that while they were out in the field doing some field reviews, these folks, I'll say, were informed about elderly exemption. They were unaware that we, the state offers that and the county offers it. And so they have made what is essentially a late application. The deadline is typically June 1st. You do have in your discretion to grant those if good cause is demonstrated. I think, and that is not defined. Good cause could mean they didn't know about it, if you so define it that way. What I would, on the tax assessor's behalf, maybe encourage, maybe for now, in the future, you can do things differently. But maybe a 30-day grace period, which is essentially what we've got. Because if we keep taking them more and more after bills go out, it creates a lot of confusion for our staff because we're billing at one level. Folks may be replying for something. And we do try to promote this every year and we'll continue to do, you know, inserts and senior center notifications and things. We want everybody that qualifies to apply and get it. But if you'll approve these three, we'll make sure they get it for this building.
Motion to approve the three presented?
Second.
Discussion.
Also, in that kind of, do we need to have a hard deadline as, as of July 1? Because I, I agree with that.
Moving forward in the future, yes.
Moving forward in the future, have a hard deadline, 30-day hard deadline. Thank you.
So that's part of the motion, isn't it?
That is part of my motion.
Okay. You second that motion. All right, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. Next we have citizen comments. Fred, do we have anyone signed up? Okay. Anyone else, no one else on citizen comment? All right. Commissioner's staff reports, anything?
You're scheduled to meet next week. Typically, that meeting is primarily held for the purposes here for the director. Are you okay if that meeting is not held?
Yes. Okay. All right.
It's off the calendar. That's all I have. I know you have the closed session.
Done here, motion, we go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We are in, currently in closed session. Thank you for coming tonight. We'll be back shortly.
I make a motion, come out of closed session?
Say.
All in favor, say aye.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.